All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started here if everyone's ready. All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:11 PM. Today is May 16th, 2023. I call this meeting to order. We are at the Cape Canaveral City Council Regular Meeting, City Hall Council Chambers, 100 Polk Avenue, Cape Canaveral, Florida. And today, as you see on the header, we are celebrating 60 years on this day. The charter was signed by the legislature and Cape Canaveral became officially incorporated. And so we're excited to be here. And with that, I'd like to do, well, first, we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The council's okay. Is Arlen here today, Arlen de Blau? Arlen, it would be an honor if you would help lead us in the pledge today. You have been the reason we love this community involved. He comes to, if he's not here, something's wrong, and we want to thank you. So if we could all stand for the pledge, and Arlen, if you'd lead us, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you all for being here today. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Alrighty. This time, council, if there's any rearranging, we're not to the consent agenda where we'd pull items, but if we would want to move anything, the order of the agenda, maybe strike anything, now's the time to do that. We're all okay with the way it is laid out. We can move forward.
Fifteen to thirteen, just switch them.
All right, so Councilmember Kellum is asking if we can move item. Well, item number fifteen is informational-only item. So we typically aren't.
Oh, okay.
But I mean, during the reports, if there's anything, I think we can talk about it. Okay, well, I'll circle that in case we forget to make sure we remind. All right, any other, any changes, council? If I got consensus, I think we can move forward if that's okay? Good deal. Now we are to the presentations and interviews portion of the meeting. And the first one is a special one. It's the Presentation of Proclamation Honoring the City of Cape Canaveral's 60th Anniversary. I am thankful to have the opportunity to read this proclamation, and we were talking about who it's being read to, and it's to the citizens of Cape Canaveral, all the stakeholders, every hand and heart and mind that went into creating and fulfilling the vision we're living out today and the vision we're still chasing for a better tomorrow. So as I read this, I just want to say thank you. It's a special day. Happy birthday, Cape Canaveral. And if council, if anyone wants to say a few words, please do. But once I'm finished reading, council, if you would go down and join together, we can, we can take a photograph. And for those of you who, these letters are up here from our representatives, from the legislature, fellow mayors in our sister city Cocoa Beach, port commissioners, everyone really showed a lot of love and sent us happy birthday wishes. So with that, I'll go ahead and go down and read the proclamation and it's to you, citizens. I'm on here. Can you hear me? Loud and clear. Okay. Official proclamation of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida. On May 11th, what, excuse me, whereas on May 11th, 1949, United States President Harry S. Truman signed legislation establishing the Joint Long Range Probing Ground at the geographical area of Florida known as Cape Canaveral. And whereas on July 29th, 1958, United States President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed the National Aeronautics and Space Act, thus launching America into the space age. And whereas, beginning in 1958, as the beach grew in population and the space program flourished, freeholders in the unincorporated area between the city of Cocoa Beach and Port Canaveral began planning and taking steps to incorporate their area into a municipality of their own. And whereas, on March 10th, 1962, and again on June 2nd, 1962, over 200 freeholders met at the Tropicana Juice Plant at Port Canaveral to vote on incorporation of a new municipality with a final vote of 205 in favor of and six against incorporation. And whereas, upon the June 2nd, 1962 incorporation vote, the town limits, town seal, and name of the municipality as Cape Canaveral were all voted on and adopted. And whereas, in 1963, the city charter was submitted to the Florida Legislature and became law on May 16th, 1963. And whereas, with the incorporation official, a tax mileage for capital improvements was approved by the voters and the city began investing in developing and improving the quality of life for its residents, an effort which continues to this day. And whereas, over the course of the intervening 60 years, the city of Cape Canaveral has experienced the highs and weathered the lows of the evolution of the neighboring space program and regional tourism industry, whilst never losing its charm, identity, and small-town feel. And whereas, with the year 2023 being the 60th anniversary of its incorporation, the city of Cape Canaveral continues to look towards the future to build upon its history and ensure the next 60 years will be just as strong and resilient. Now, therefore I, Wes Morrison, mayor of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby join the rest of this city council, city staff, city residents, property and business owners, and local and state officials and dignitaries in acknowledging and celebrating the city of Cape Canaveral's diamond anniversary, signed and sealed this 16th day, May 2023. Thank you. Again, thank you, and a big special thanks to our city staff who put together a nice celebration today and worked hard at putting the pieces together. I think there was a committee that was formed, so thank you for the committee. I thought it was very nice and somewhat cool looking at those pins. So yes, again, happy birthday, Cape Canaveral council. Any comments you'd like to make? Mayor Pro Tim Raymond will read the next proclamation, and so she'll wait down there.
I'd just like to say, I've been here since 1986 and seen so many changes and the city really grow and develop into a really cool place that everybody wants to live at. And we've done that and maintained our small-town feel, and that's what we're working towards. Growing and bringing good things to our citizens while keeping that small-town feel. So congratulations, Cape Canaveral.
The other thing I have to say is location, location, location. And that's what everyone says when they're looking for a place to live. And when some of us come down to look for a place after we retire, that's what we look for. We look for convenience. We look for someplace where we feel comfortable. And I think it's the same as choosing colleges and universities for children. You, I always used to say, when I did workshops, I said, choose the college or university where you feel the atmosphere and where you feel comfortable and you could fit in, and everything else will follow after that. It's the same with this city. And I think that that's why, I met two brand-new residents yesterday shopping, and they are just so happy to be here. And the one lady, they're both from Northern California, and the one lady was just visiting her friend, trying to help herself. But she said, she likes it so much, she's ready to buy a place here too to get settled. So, thank you, Cape Canaveral, for, you know, giving us a great place, and we love the beach and people, and very happy to give it to you. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Willis?
Yes, my wife and I moved here in 2011, and we got as far as Cape Canaveral and said, that's it. This is the place. When I ran for office in two years ago now, a gentleman walked up to me and said, you're not from around here. Of course, he couldn't, couldn't tell because of the accent, I'm sure, but he said, you know, you need to be from here. And I said, well, I may not have been born here, but I got here as quick as I could. So, but we love it here, and this is home. Thank you. Cape Canaveral.
Thank you. And you got here as quick as we could, and Todd and I were, our city manager was talking to a resident one day, and the question, I don't know if he asks it every time, but I like it, is, is that, and do you want to leave? And most people, if not all, say no, we don't. So Todd, any comments or city attorney?
I was born in Cape Canaveral Hospital. I have not gone very far. I love this town. I love this area, and I have no intention of leaving. Love it. I can see why people would want to spend their whole life here. I'm proof of that.
Thank you, and thank you for all you do. City Attorney, any words? Thank you, and thank, City Clerk? Thank you all. And we'll get to the public comment portion of the meeting as well. And so if you want to have some comments, that'd be the appropriate time. And so with that, let's put our hands together for Cape Canaveral 60 years. Thank you. At this time, Mayor Pro Tim Raymond is going to read our next proclamation. I'm going to bring that to her now.
The official proclamation. Whereas hate, violence has become a daily occurrence and continues to increase at epidemic rate across the nation. And whereas, history has tragically taught us what happens when people stand by and allow acts of violence, hatred, and injustice to occur. And whereas, those that are exposed to such inequitable treatment often feel alienated without hope and helpless to stand alone against the hate and aggression. And whereas, the city of Cape Canaveral expresses deep and sincere sympathy to those and their families who have experienced hatred because of their ethnicity, nationality, race, religion, socioeconomic level, gender, sexual orientation, age, political affiliation, and unjust behavior or discrimination toward people with disability. And whereas, the city of Cape Canaveral recognizes the recent increase of anti-Semitic hatred, violence, and crime. And whereas, the city of Cape Canaveral understands the traumatic results of bullying, stalking, cyber stalking, and hate mail, and deplore such actions that cause intense pain among our residents. And whereas, the city of Cape Canaveral is committed to supporting other cities in our state to work together to respond to the call for equality throughout our nation. Now, Wes Morrison, mayor of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, hereby proclaims commitment to supporting the Florida League of Cities in its mission to create a safe, secure, and equitable environment, and declare that the city of Cape Canaveral stands against hate. And this, this will hang in our city hall.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to move to our third presentation. I'm excited about this one. This is Mission Space Coast Unified Branding Initiative, presented by Angela Neal, Director of Special Projects Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast. Ms. Neal, how are you?
I'm doing good. Thank you guys for having me here today, and what an honor and great way to be part of and introduce this initiative to the community celebrating the 60th anniversary of Cape Canaveral. Congratulations to you guys. So my name's Angela Neal. I'm with the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast, and I'm here today to talk about Mission Space Coast. And that's Unified Branding Initiative for Brevard County. And this has never been done before for the county, so it'll be the first time that we have a unified brand across the county. We're doing this in partnership with the Space Coast Office of Tourism. And this is not, although it's in partnership with the Tourism Office, the purpose behind that is the brand is going to be utilized for business development, talent attraction, and tourism attraction. This is going to be a brand that the whole community can use. So whether you're a resident, if you're a business owner, if you're part of the county, and the municipalities will utilize the brand. Go to the next slide. So this, this brand, I'll say, is kind of, or the, there we go. This slide is the catalyst for the Unified Branding Initiative. And the reason is, whenever people look at Brevard County from the outside in, they'll see this abundance of resources and different commodities throughout the county, but it doesn't tell the whole story of all that we have to offer and all the assets in Brevard County. And so what we're looking to do is create a unified brand. And part of this that's interesting is we did internal data collection, which will be on the next slide, but we also did external data collection. And something that we found in our external data collection where we asked different questions throughout, across the United States about familiarity with different areas. In Brevard County and Cape Canaveral was one of the top that were, people were familiar with and aware of. So that was pretty exciting to see. But what we're trying to do is lift, all boats rise together type of scenario. So while some of the businesses will attract people to certain areas, we want them to see Brevard County for all that it has to offer. You have a lot of different lifestyle options, a lot of different recreational options, living options, different employment options. And so we want to really be able to tell that story and attract residents that are going to respect the area in the same way that we do. And so we want to responsibly attract talent and then also businesses to the area. This is the slide with a little bit about the phases that we had. We've been doing this initiative for, the active portion, for almost a year. And we've done a pretty thorough discovery in Phase One and Phase Two. Our Phase One was internal Brevard County. We had community conversations where throughout Brevard County, we spoke with residents and stakeholders from businesses and different organizations to get their feedback about what they felt like defined Brevard County, what made us different compared to other communities across, not only Florida, but across the United States and the world. And in that, we reached 800 people that were part of that, the community conversations. Then we moved on to our focus groups where we brought in an outside consultant, that's an expert in this field, and we held six different focus groups in North, Central, and South parts of Brevard County, and invited a variety of people to those, be part of those focus groups. We had 73 people that participated in those as well. And then we had an internal Brevard County survey where we had close to 800 people that participated in that survey, which gave us about a 95% confidence level in those results. And so within all of those step one, two, and three, there was a lot of uniformity and the responses, which was really exciting, because when you think about how different and vast Brevard County can be, it can be a little bit overwhelming, but it showed us that we can come together and agree and have a unified brand. From there, we took all of that data. We did external data collection, and we had two focus groups that, we had four focus groups, but in two locations. It was Houston, Texas, and then Raleigh, North Carolina. And then we did a broad survey, as I'd mentioned, across the United States, really just trying to understand what are factors that make people stay where they're at, would make them love their current location, and then also what makes them move and decide to move to a location based on employment. And then we are just now starting what I think everybody has been waiting for, which is the visualization and design phase. So this is actually the part where we're working with another outside consultant that's a marketing firm, and they're actually taking all of that data, and they're going to visualize it. So we're starting with a story initially. So we have to tell our story. So we're understanding our core values, our mission, and our vision of Brevard County based on the feedback that we have received. And then we're going to develop a story for Unified Brands. And then from there, we're going to create different imagery that will relate to different people. So, and as I'd mentioned, we're going to be targeting different parts of the United States with this. And so we're trying to build to different people based on what their interests are. And so there will be different imagery to not only showcase our assets, but also build to the different audiences. And then there's also going to be a logo and tagline. And so we hope that one day, just similar to the "I love New York" brand that has been around for 50 years, we hope that this brand will be something that lives on for decades to come. So the next slide has a little bit, little bit more exciting. I know that that slide's really boring, but that was honestly extremely important, because a lot of communities, they will create a brand behind closed doors, so they don't get the community's input. And so we worked extremely hard to make sure that we have reached out to the community, and everybody's had an opportunity to be involved. And so that's honestly why I'm here today. We've met with the city managers and the mayors, the route of Brevard County already. We wanted to make sure to let the council members know about this opportunity to be involved, and then in addition, the residents. So we have postcards, which, if you guys are okay with it, I'd love to leave some here. This is a way to promote this initiative, to keep it top of mind. But in addition, we just completed a photo contest, and we're going to have two more before the completion of this initiative. And basically, if you have something you love about Brevard County, you can enter for a photo contest to be, have your photo on the postcard, and people will send that around the world. In addition, we're going to have pop-up focus groups. And the purpose of those focus groups is to really just keep temperature checking where we're at with the design process. And so there's going to be opportunities to get involved with those. And so if that's something that's of interest, my contact information from the last slide, and please don't hesitate to reach out. And then, I guess if there are any other questions, I'm definitely here to answer those if you guys have any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions?
No real questions, but this is the second time I've got to hear you present this, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you guys for having me here today. And I just really appreciate your involvement and support for this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, and yes, please leave some cards, and we will support and promote as much as we can. Thank you. All right, moving right along to our final, well, present interview, which is, we have two applicants here today for the appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Do we have Mr. Help, Steve Help, that's here? Steve, if you would like, you can come on forward here. And city attorney, ask you a few questions, and while he's getting ready, I just want to say thank you.
Hello again, Mr. Help. At the Board of Adjustment meeting, you indicated that all the information is true and correct in your application, so please explain to the city council why you would like to serve on the Board of Adjustment and what you will bring to that role.
All right, thank you. Like many others here, I'm from somewhere else, but I'm here now, and I'm here to stay. My wife and I have been property owners in Cape Canaveral since 2004. We've been permanent residents for the last four years. Spent my career in commercial industrial construction, in the design and execution element of it, and also served on the local Board of Appeals in the small town that we raised our children in. Been behind the podium many times and been up in the chair in my, in my career, so I think I'd be an asset to the, to the city in this regard. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, I want to say you have excellent penmanship. And my wife was talking, and I kind of was going through the agenda, left it open, and she said, he must be in construction, because the architect. No, thank you so much. I had a chance to meet you and your lovely wife, and you, I was very excited to see that you're, you're helping to contribute with all your experience. Such an important board. Doesn't meet often, but when they do, it's usually big, and we're lucky to have your knowledge and skills up there to help make the best decision you can. Thank you. Any other questions, council?
Not really a question, but Mr. Help, thank you. You've been very active in helping and participating with the Coffee with the Cop, and I appreciate your participation in the city functions. Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you too, and I especially noticed that you are a current volunteer at the Canaveral Port Ministry. Thank you very much for doing that. I think that volunteerism is very important for our community, and that community service means a lot to all of us here in the city. Thank you.
Mr. Help, thank you, and I'm glad that you are stepping up. That's one really unique thing about our little city is we have so many experienced, talented people that when they sit on a board, it really helps us up here and make decisions. Thank you for stepping up, and welcome.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more applicant here, thankfully. It's Adler Moldenhauer. Hello, Mr. Moldenhauer, how are you doing?
Hi, mayor and council, thank you for having me, and congratulations on this anniversary today. Cape Canaveral is already, I am a new resident for the last couple of years, but it's already become a very special place to me. And my son was just born, April 17th, at Cape Canaveral Hospital. So a very, very special place.
That's great. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Doesn't get better than that. That's fantastic. Our city attorney will ask you a few questions, and we'll get started.
Good evening again. I'm at the Board of Adjustment meeting. I'm sure all the information in your application is still correct. So, same question, please explain why you would like to serve on the Board of Adjustment, and kind of attributes would you bring to the role as a board member?
Sure. You know, I've been thinking about this question earlier today and how I'd answer it, because I assumed we would come up. Specifically with the Johnny Board and the Board of Adjustments, I like to think of it as, in an architectural point of view, form versus function. How does, how does a piece of land be a commercial, residential? Aesthetically, how does it, what does it add to the area? And then, of course, function. How does it function within, with the buildings around it, the community around it? I like to think, you know, as a mechanical engineer, I can evaluate both of those aspects in an effective manner to really identify, you know, if something is an appropriate addition to a community. That's something that I really think I'll enjoy. I'd like to become more involved in the community and hopefully provide something.
Counsel, any questions?
I see that you're a business owner.
Yes, sir.
And you, your child was just born. When do you sleep?
That's a good question. We take shifts. My wife is here as well. My wife is here as well, and she's been wonderful for the whole process. And we take turns, and every three hours or so right now, we get off the feed and, as you know.
Well, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Absolutely. Honored to be here, especially on this wonderful anniversary.
Thank you very much for volunteering. My husband sat on the Board of Adjustments for many years, and it was a fulfilling job for him. And I have to share with you that my youngest son's birthday is April 17th, and I think he just turned 47.
That's great.
Thank you for being here, and a question, what, what do you like the most about Cape Canaveral?
That's a great question. I have never lived in a community with the resources that you guys offer. Obviously, the natural beauty of having the beach, but, you know, when I was interviewing, initially expressed my interest to Kyle Harris, you know, I expressed how wonderful the community center is. Just the new splash pad, I work out at the community center. Weekly, a couple of times a week, we walk to the park in front of the community center, and we've always had a wonderful experience with the neighbors, with, you know, the amenities that the city offers, but also just the cleanliness and the thoughtfulness of the area. We really admire it. I previously lived on the Gulf Coast of Florida, and had a very different experience, really didn't see that sense of community that we all have here.
Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Just want to echo the whole Counsel, thank you again, and congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Happy birthday to your little one, the important one. Thank you. All right, so that concludes the presentations and interviews portion of the meeting, and thank you all who helped get us through those. We are now on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Any member of the public may address any items that do not appear on the agenda, and any item that is listed on the agenda for final action by the City Council, excluding public hearing items, which are heard at the public hearing portion of the meeting, ministerial items, and quasi-judicial or emergency items. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes, and that the items that are on the agenda, excuse me, the Council may schedule items that are not on the agenda at a future meeting. And so if you have an issue, we certainly, if priority, can, can discuss that here and get it on a future meeting. But tonight, I do have some cards related to the agenda items. I do not think we have, yeah, we have one, two, three public hearing items. If there's a public hearing item, I'm just going to ship that, but sort of going in order here. The first one I have is Dr. Shannon Roberts. How are you? I'm making sure that now is the appropriate time for you.
The only thing that I think would be relevant to an agenda item is the other one on the coyotes.
Okay.
So everything else I think would be relatively new, other than to wish the city a happy birthday, and thank you for your service to Counsel. I just wanted to mention, as one of those that came to Cape Canaveral in 1997, it was a space program that understandably, coming from the Washington DC area, was such a draw. And of course, we have an opportunity to live pretty much anywhere near the Space Center, but there was no doubt Cape Canaveral was the place to be. And so I just wanted to express my sincere appreciation to you and the staff, everything you do that keeps us so vibrant and positive moving forward. Thank you. The one concern I got is with regard to the strategic retreat, I just wanted to thank you so much for your follow-up with the action and agenda there, but I did want to ask, because there were a number of community members that were there as part of the retreat, just listening, I mean, we were just observing. But I was just wondering, here do we have a chance to document some of the concerns or ideas or whatever that were surfaced at that retreat? And if there's maybe a method that we could suggest in the future via an email or whatever to make sure we get some of those ideas and concerns captured? I'm just mentioning that as a thought real quick. In particular, the one that I was concerned about among several was the PNC Board and opportunity to feed into Counsel any ideas and suggestions, because one of the concerns I've got is that we have a proliferation of hotels, for example, and I don't know that the community is aware of this as much as we used to be when we used to have the PNC Board, where foundations come to Counsel, and it was brought to the community's attention that this is a big item coming to the community. And it hits on the gentleman that was just here talking about, you know, looking at the development of the city. This is so significant, and I'm hearing so many residents beyond me, they're talking about the characterization of the city, you know, you know, are we losing our residential lead and preciousness because we are just proliferating, you know, the commercial sector? And my opinion is that we'll lose the community. And then the other thing is Jason Steele, I mentioned this to Councilwoman Willis, that Jason Steele, as we know, is a representative up in Tallahassee for the city. And I was just going to ask that Jason might could give us a debrief on what happened with the session, and also perhaps ask Jana Sanceros to come and address the community, you know, just, you know, in the sense of bridging that relationship at a council meeting. He's our state representative, as most everybody knows, but I think that would be very good. Steve Principal, he did that, and it was very helpful just to have that bridge of the understanding of what the community was interested in and needed. In fact, that left-hand turn going south to north on A1A going on to central, west central, was in part a great deal of the result of that bridge of relationships we had with Representative Principal. And then the last thing is just concern that we expressed in the past, and that's the land lock that's emerging because of the cruise ships and so forth, between truly drive North Atlantic and George King. And I'm just curious, and you all can speak of this another time, the relationship the city has with the port, and what kind of joint planning is done, and sensitivity to concerns of the congestion in the city and traffic patterns and so forth. We truly are getting landlocked, and I mentioned Harbor Pike, you know, state community which you live, is also potentially impacted by this, but it's just incredible. The other day, it was just really hard to get out. So thank you again. Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Dr. Roberts reminded me, the strategic planning retreat minutes have not been presented to Counsel yet. They'll be at the Counsel in the June meeting for review, and I think that's where we'll see those comments from the public there, Mayor.
Great, thank you for answering that. And yeah, as far as getting a follow-up from the legislative or representative or senator, that's an excellent idea. I think he is speaking, actually at our party, at the Kiwanis Club Rotary Club, Representative Saroy, but I just heard about it, and so, but either way, having him here, I think that would be great, and so maybe we can work together and reach out and invite him in.
I was planning on doing that.
And I'd like to show him our intentions with A1A, that this year, you know, we just all looked at a number I think that we should be proud of, that we're budgeting for it, we're planning for it. And I think that all does connect with the port, obviously. We just met with the port, seems about a month ago, City Manager, and there are some, they're trying to make decisions that would impact Cape Canaveral. So I heard you loud and clear from A1A with our state rep to the port, there's definitely road conversations, but our City Attorney and staff has been working on, you know, keeping us updated on any, like, important legislative changes that come our way. And so do we have plans on having some sort of legislative download? I know that City Attorney sometimes can help with the ones that really impact us, maybe at the next meeting or...
We have, or Legisities does give us the updates when I forward it on to you.
Yes.
But I also want to get, as Shannon mentioned, a report from Mr. Steele as well.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, comments? Thank you. Next public comment here, Dr. Roberts, I do have another one there, but we'll hold because that one's related to coyotes, which is later discussion item. The next one I have is Ms. Felicia Warabet, if I'm spelling that, saying that correctly. Felicia, are you here? Hello? If you want to come on forward, now, this is for coyotes, and it's a good, you can come on forward and speak now, if you would like, this for anyone who might have to go somewhere. We're not going to be taking it up until the end, but it's a big consent agenda item. It'd be a fool to try to predict the time, but 30, 45 minutes, we'd probably be there. So if now is best, please. Thank you very much. Okay. Next one is Heather Parker Jones. Hello, Ms. Jones, how are you?
Just real quickly, I wanted to say, my name is Dr. Heather Parker Jones. I'm a historian, so I'm going to come at it a little bit from that perspective. We've been residents, property owners in Cape Canaveral since 2007. So we brought our, been bringing our children here for all of those years, and we bought property here for that very reason, to enjoy the space. We are responsible property owners, and we began to buy more properties, and we wanted to have a place for families to come, like we've come in other parts of the world and other parts of the United States, to enjoy vacation owned by a responsible homeowner, where we have real attention to respecting the community, respecting the neighbors, and providing a place that is not a hotel. The hotels let anybody come, they don't screen. We and our properties screen very carefully. We attract the kind of guests that we are, responsible guests, and we like to attract corporate guests, bringing the kind of attention to Cape Canaveral that we want to enjoy ourselves as homeowners here. We're interested in revisiting the seven-day restriction for rentals, six-day, seven-day, six-night restriction for short-term rentals in Cape Canaveral. I know change is frightening. I, we all know that change is frightening. As a historian, I can tell you, change came to Cape Canaveral many, many years ago, and we have benefited over these many decades from that change. Seven-day rentals for short-term rentals is causing a real problem with us being able to bring the kind of residents to Cape Canaveral that we want in our properties. By doing that, we are turning away the very groups that we are inviting. People from corporations like the space industry, they call us, they know that we are the highest, one of the highest-rated property owners on short-term rentals in this entire area, five-star all the way across. We bring in the kind of vendors that we are, and we cannot then continue to serve our Space Coast customers in the Space Coast corporations and healthcare communities by saying that they have to stay for six nights if they're coming in for a conference that is only a four-day conference or a three-day conference. So I was just wanting to have the Counsel to consider revisiting that ordinance. The 2021 updates to the ordinances that are in place really take care of much of the issues that we would be concerned about with having irresponsible short-term people coming to rent. So I would like just to put that forth to the Counsel, to think about changing that requirement. Responsible homeowners like us who rent out these properties, we ensure that the best people are coming and that they're respectful of their neighbors, of our neighbors in this neighborhood.
Thank you. Looks like I have David Jones. Hey, Mr. Jones.
So I'm giving you a pamphlet that we prepared. So my name is Dr. David D. Jones, my wife Heather Parker Jones. I am a veteran of the United States Army, I am a disabled veteran. We have lived here since 2007. Something to bring to note, we've followed some of the ordinance that Cape Canaveral is trying to put in place. We have three properties. The first we obtained in 2007 for my mother, and then later for our family when she became too sick to stay here. We've put solar panels on all three of our properties. We also encourage our guests to bring in electric cars that they can charge at the free stations, which we also take advantage of. We encourage any local shopping, any local events that our families come into. We have tried to be in compliance even before we understood that there was a seven-day rule. We've never rented our properties out for less than three days. What we're directly requesting is for our properties, since we've followed the practice of seven days, we haven't had one rental other than a year later. We were, we considered a super rental for Airbnb, meaning we were booked out for months at a time. Over the five weeks that we've complied, not one rental have we been able to obtain. We cannot financially keep going, we'll lose our properties. We've put over $200,000 into our properties. COVID hit us exceedingly hard. My wife wasn't able to work, she's a university professor. I had to work in an emergency room for a year. We decided at that time, we were never going to be in a position where we would just have one income and put our family in jeopardy. So we leveraged our savings, we came, we have invested in all three properties. Like I said, we've put solar, we've put hurricane shutters on, hurricane windows, we've boosted up the property. We wanted to present pictures, but we weren't able to beat the thumb drive. We've lowered our prices 20% after the first month because we weren't able to attract any renters. With the 20% drop, we still haven't had one winner in the short term. A year out, someone is a winner. But the summer is our most vital time, and over the last six weeks, if we've complied with the ordinance, not one winner, we will not be able to continue. We'll end up having to file bankruptcy if this goes the way that it is. And you have the pamphlet to look through, it gives some background history on us, and I'll stop because I've got not my lot of time. And I'm sorry, I will say one other thing. To the best that we have been able to do, we have been extremely responsible. Anytime there has been a complaint, we've tried to address it immediately. We've addressed that with Airbnb and put in new policies to keep that from happening. Certain places that are smaller, we don't allow kids to come in to be...
Mr. Jones, we just have to, I appreciate you taking the time to put that packet together. At some point, we are all available, Counsel, city staff, love to follow up with you on it and talk, understand a little bit more. So thank you. Okay. Robert Klunkowski, was this from earlier? Okay, so you're, thank you. Double check in. Mr. Brad Prevell. Hey, Brad, how are you?
First, my daughter was born March 1991 in Cape Canaveral Hospital. Last month, as you know, I mentioned about ethnic intimidation in the meeting. Thank you, I think it's Lisa Day for sending me that information. I responded to an email, how I felt about, the information was quite stale. However, I was very surprised today that the City Council, City Management, came up with a new proclamation against anti-hate. To be very honest, I wasn't about to say anything about that. I was going to bring up my email that I sent to you, Todd and Mia. However, it proves that the elected officials, City Management, listens to their citizens about situations. And I want to thank each and every one of you for coming up with this. However, I want to remind everyone that it's not just a piece of paper. It's that piece of paper and 99 cents will get you a cup of coffee in any one of our 11 convenience stores. Okay? We need to continue to do this. As a matter of fact, I spoke about this a month ago here, and President Biden spoke about it, almost using my same exact words this past weekend, that ethnic intimidation, he used other words, but ethnic intimidation is a nationalistic terrorism threat to everyone in the United States. We must be diligent against this. One thing I realized since the last thing, last time I was here, the pellets that were in those baggies that had that flyer, it was rabbit food. You know why? Rabbits are prey. I will not be preyed. I'm not a predator, but I will defend. So I want to thank you guys for doing this. I also volunteered myself, and my... I also volunteered myself in my email that I'm here to come up with ideas and work with the city to forward this anti-hate that's a disease within our society. So council, city management, thank you very much. It was a very, very pleasant surprise on your support, listening to a citizen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That means a lot, and to know that your voice was heard, and thank you, council. Now, Mr. Prevell, we got another one here from you, but I think that's on a different topic. Do you want to go ahead? Sorry to make you walk all the way over. I didn't realize they were, another one in there.
First of all, my daughter was born in a Cape Canaveral hospital. City Park, you know, I know a lot of people's emails have been blown up by a neighbor about what's going on in City Park. But I have to tell you, apparently after nine months or so, you all have been listening because the bathrooms are being opened up daily, other than Sunday. The city people have trash that are picking up every day from the park and cleaning. Occasionally, there's someone from C-5 Center, C-6 Center, going around and picking up trash. So I want to say thank you for that, for listening to that gentleman. And so maybe he'll stop sending you guys emails. But the purpose that I want to talk about is, I ran into a council person this past week, and they mentioned that they hired a temporary person to work on the splash pad. Guys, we need to have that open on Sundays, okay? We need the bathrooms open up on Sundays. You have a children's park. I happen to live across the street. No, I don't open up my bathroom. But you don't know how many people go there on a Sunday to see the doors being closed. I'm told there's a timer on those locks. That's great. So have it open up on Sunday morning and close Sunday afternoon. I think we can do the same thing for the splash pad. I think there's, gosh, you can't tell how many people go there on Sundays and they're disappointed. And there was a gentleman here who said they enjoy that park so much. He's a perfect example, young children going to the park. I think the spend. Most people in Cape Canaveral work five days a week, Monday through Friday. That's why the city of Cape Canaveral has summer camp, because there's no school, so those kids have someplace to do, someplace to go and not get in trouble. Well, let the parents take their kids on their two days off and enjoy the half a million dollar investment that we put into that splash pad. I think that's rather important. And Mr. Mayor, you mentioned in the proclamation of the 60th birthday that we're a family-oriented community. That's when our families are off from work, is Sunday. Please, I would like to know a date when the splash pad and the bathrooms can be opened on a Sunday. Thanks, guys. Have a very nice day. Sorry I can't stay. I have an emergency in New Jersey that I must go to. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and wish you well with the, the emergency. Kristin Lorty. Hello, Kristin.
Good evening, council, and happy 60th birthday. Kristin Lorty, Cocoa resident and Brevard County Advocate on Citizen Participation. I want to say that my comment is inspired by Mayor Portem Raymond, who talked about how it's so important to go where you're comfortable. And I thought I would like to point out tonight some of the things that Cape Canaveral does that helps people feel more comfortable. So I'd like to, I study citizen participation throughout Brevard County on this season. I have been to Titusville, I've been to the county commission here, and also to Cocoa. And I want to say that I feel the most comfortable here in Cape Canaveral. And I want to point out some of the things that you do, and I'd like to mention that some of our other meetings in Brevard County have had some setbacks. So we don't need to list all of those, but you know, this city in particular has had no citizen participation setbacks that I'm aware of, and has had several things that I'd like to commend you on. So, oh, and by the way, just yesterday, I spent an hour on the phone after Florida Today reached out to me personally to ask for my opinions on citizen participation in Brevard County, following one of my detailed email comments that they were copied on. So there is interest in this county in citizen participation. So a couple of things that Cape Canaveral does that are not common throughout Brevard. One, Cape Canaveral is a city where residents can personally meet with the city manager once a month and have coffee, which happens to this Friday at 10:00 a.m. in Menity Park. City, this is, this is really, you know, I mean, to me, it seems like, wow, what a great idea. This is the only city I'm aware of in Brevard County that does that. And I personally did this last month, I can attest to that. There is coffee and the city manager and an hour of quality conversation. Cape Canaveral, where the mayor will read a citizen-written comment into the public record, into the public record. This is not customary for Brevard County, so I'd like all of the residents of Cape Canaveral to appreciate this. Cape Canaveral, where citizens can participate remotely to address city council. I did this personally. I tried this out just last month. I addressed city council personally, did I not? I mean, that is really remarkable that this city allows citizens to participate remotely. Florida Today could not believe that. They said, how does that happen? I said, look at their website. So it is remarkable. And lastly, the city has a day-long planning workshop, which all citizens can attend. It's open to the public and should attend next year. There was citizen representation this year, and I support the citizen who said that those comments that we provided do belong in the, in the city records and for their consideration. This is really great stuff there. I've studied citizen planning throughout Brevard this season, and you guys are the only ones doing a day-long workshop on it. You know, it's just not happening. In other workshops, it's not like this. So I really want to say thank you and happy birthday and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Kristin. We appreciate all you're doing to help. John Benton. Okay. Dr. Roberts, I got yours, but we'll come back to that with coyotes if I understand your request when we take it up. Thank you. Okay, that's all the comment cards that I have here physically. If you turn one in and you didn't get a chance to speak, please just come forward or raise your hand. Let me know. Seeing none online, if anyone would like to speak, we ask that your hand be raised. This time, I haven't seen any hands raised. Double check. Looks like we got quite a few. Thank you all for listening in. No hands raised. We'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting. And with that, we will go and move into the consent agenda. Council, if there's any items that we would like to remove from the consent agenda, now's the time.
I'd like to pull items three and four.
Items, Councilmember Willis would like to remove items three and four. Council, any other items you want to add to be removed? That leaves us with one, two, five, and six. Seeing none, I'd like, just need a motion to adopt the remaining balance.
I'll make a motion that we adopt one, two, five, and six.
A second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Kellum, second by Mayor Portem Raymond, to adopt items one, two, five, and six. Any more discussion on those items? City Attorney, are we good with those two? I know that we had talked about pull, I think we're good with, I'm sorry, city manager. Three and five was the ones. You don't need to discuss anything on one, two, five, and six. Okay, great. With that, city clerk, please.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Portem Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Sinogen items one, two, five, and six pass 4-0, which brings us to item number three. Councilmember Willis?
Yes, I just wanted to get some clarification. We're talking about the fees, violations on the golf carts. What, what fees do we have or what can we put in place for non-compliance?
Yep, thank you. Mayor, this came up on every one of my city council member 101 meetings since this agenda went out. The Agenda Item Resolution 2308 adopts a registration fee for golf cart and also an annual renewal fee for golf cart. That's when you apply for, you want to, you have a golf cart, you want to run it in the city. There's a map. We have a place where you can have this, but the golf cart has to be inspected and registered and you get a sticker. The, the fee that we're proposing is $150 for the registration and $100 annually. So that, that's what this agenda item is. The question that came up was, well, what about penalties? What if somebody doesn't get a registration? What if they're just flaunting the law and they're just driving their golf cart while other people have to pay to get registered, they're not? What is the city code going to do? So I talked to city attorney, I talked to Officer Malino about this. Excuse me. We also looked into what other cities do, most notably City of Satellite Beach. They've had a successful golf cart program for some time now. And here, here's what we think we know, as in response to your question. If the city desires to put in a penalty for failure to obtain a registration from the city, it would require an ordinance. So there's two readings. We can establish a fee as we deem appropriate. The City of Satellite Beach does have, I say fee, penalty. City of Satellite Beach does have a penalty. Theirs is $50 for the first time you get caught without a registration. $100 for the second time. A third offense will get you $150 fine. Any repeats beyond third is another $150 fine. So we certainly could do that. Matter of fact, I've already asked the city attorney to, to draft that because I think that's a good idea for us. Another thing that was mentioned by several council members to me was, could we consider doubling the registration fee in addition? So if you're caught, you might get that $50 penalty, but you would also be subject to a double fee for registration. That's certainly up to the city council. Also, in talking to Officer Malino about this, he confirmed, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that this would be, even if the city didn't enact a penalty ordinance, Uniform Traffic Citation, UTC, would apply, so you could already use state law 316 and 318, I believe, to administer a penalty provision under that. Please say if I said anything of that wrong.
So somebody's riding their golf cart on the city street, and they fail to register with the state of form, they fail to register with the city. They're operating an unregistered motor vehicle on a public street, which is actually a criminal offense. So they could be subjected to going to jail or an appearance report, but you can use the traffic citation.
And we don't need to do anything to enforce that?
I mean, the current, the, the way the city's golf cart ordinance is written, there is an enforcement section in the ordinance. And as, as the officer indicated, there, there are penalties for moving and non-moving violations under the Uniform Traffic Code that, you know, the ordinance specifically states that that's a potential penalty. In addition, the ordinance says that you can treat violations of the golf cart ordinance like any other code enforcement violation. So there could be a code enforcement penalty if brought to the special magistrate and found in violation of the golf cart ordinance. So we didn't, when we did the ordinance, we kept it very broad, very general, because we felt there was some, an enforcement mechanism already available. However, if the council would like a specific penalty for a specific violation, we certainly can amend the ordinance to provide a specific penalty for a specific kind of violation. It's up to the council. Be happy to, you know, do that if that's the council's desire.
And if I could add, Mayor, if it is the council's desire to do that, that doesn't mean we have to delay the go-live date with our program because we're already covered by Florida law.
The Florida law, the fee or fine, you might have said it, I'm sorry. How much is it? $150 or 50? No.
I believe a non-moving infraction, say, a forbidden violation, would be, I think, $118.
Okay.
If you have a stop-to-stop sign or a red light, it would be a moving infraction, so I think it's $160.
Okay, so we're not talking $200 or $300? Me, it's, it's pretty similar. I think the, the escalating idea. I think, for me, I don't, I think we stay under the Uniform Traffic Code and keep that broad approach. Especially if it's relatively the same fee inconsistent with state law. I certainly don't want to go much higher than them, but addressing the habitual. I guess, isn't there already statute that if someone is a habitual traffic offender, that they would, I mean, these are non-moving violations. They, they wouldn't fall under that, would they? Because I think the only thing, what I'm wrestling with is, what does the resolution add? The escalation?
Though the, the current resolution as proposed establishes the registration fee and the renewal fee. No penalties.
Penalties would have to be adopted by ordinance, so that's why, this, this, as the manager indicated, the resolution just establishes a registration and a, and a renewal registration fee. If the council wants to adopt specific penalties for a specific violation, we would have to bring back an ordinance for the council to adopt. You know, I'm not sure if there's a repeat offender provision in the Uniform Traffic Code. I don't, I'd have to look at that. I think the officer would as well. There is a potential, if somebody was brought to a special magistrate, there is a repeat offender provision under Florida statutes where you, where you can treat a repeat offender for the same offense a little bit differently than the initial offense.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, my concern is, will the public understand the ramifications of not complying with registration? I want them to be able to look at it and know that it's more than just, eh, no, I'm not going to register.
It's more serious. Yeah. So if we promulgated that or put it on the registration?
Just, just to be sure that everybody knows.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
I agree too.
You know, if we, if we can alter the forms that they get when they order, well, the people who are going to register aren't going to be the ones getting fined.
There's, Mayor, there's two resources currently. The registration packet, which contains all the information. We can add this to that. And then there's the FAQ statement, which is not only in the packet, but also available online. Well, both are available online, so we can see it in there as well.
I'm good with that. Okay.
Why would we need to add something if the state statute already has a fine?
I, I think Councilmember Willis is bringing it up. From a customer service perspective, it would be helpful for people to know we take this seriously. You do need to register, and if you don't, you're subject to being pulled over and given a traffic fine. Customer service.
So we don't need to add anything if we follow the state regulations?
Yeah, the other question that I have, what happens if somebody rides their golf cart on the sidewalk, for example?
The ordinance addresses where they can operate, and I believe it says it's prohibited on the sidewalk, is that correct? So that would subject them to a moving violation, there, correct?
Yes. The do's and the don'ts, right, if that were.
Mayor Dave looks like he's itching to say something.
It's, it's really about our customer service approach to this issue. Kyle Harris and the rest of the staff have prepared a very robust, comprehensive webpage that will be, that'll be in the city website that discusses all, I'm going to say, most of these issues. Based on this discussion, we might want to tweak it a little bit, but that is ready to go live. It can go live tomorrow. And it will discuss everything about the requirement for registration, penalties, what you can and can't do with golf carts. As a matter of fact, we had just, it's really neat. I saw it for the first time today. We have a graphics. have a graphics design intern that's working with us, and she has prepared just the most wonderful graphics that I think everybody's really going to like. But they're very informative as well, so I think we are trying to make that extra step towards being customer service friendly and getting that information out there.
That's great. Councilmember Willis, did we address everything?
Yeah, just so that we have the effort out there to alert the public and warn them of noncompliance.
So Mayor, so I can understand, I believe there's no consensus to move forward with any penalty provisions at this time, no direction to ask the city attorney to create anything? We're just going to consider approving this resolution with the initial fee and the renewal fee, no penalties? Penalties will come from the gentleman in green over there.
Right.
Yeah. A resident comes in a year later to get registered vehicle for another year, their golf cart, we can pull up in our computer if it had been decided for all the year on the golf cart and for what. The city would have the option, I believe, to deny renewal if they're a repeat offender.
Thank you very much. I think we're going to learn a lot, but we got all the right.
We certainly will learn a lot. We're learning every week right now on this golf cart program, so bear with us as a community, we'll get there.
Any further comments, questions on that one? City manager, you're good?
Yeah, we just need a motion to approve this resolution, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution three. Our item three.
Resolution twenty-three oh eight.
One second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis to approve resolution number twenty-three oh eight, and a second by Councilmember Kellum. Any more discussion? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Against.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Resolution number twenty-three oh eight passes three to one. Moving on to item number four, Councilmember Willis, this is resolution number twenty-three oh nine.
Similar issue. I'd like the resolution to be amended to, say, application and renewal fee after the five-year period.
Mayor, would you like me to explain this for the audience's benefit?
Is this something that we could, yes, please, can we locate this? Is it provided, is it a line in the packet or the resolution?
Agenda item number four is this resolution. Mia's pulling it up. What this does is it establishes a one thousand dollar franchise fee for small haulers. What are small haulers? Those are dumpster service companies that want to provide small dumpsters to residents and businesses in Cape Canaveral. So small dumpsters is anything under twenty cubic yards, because anything over twenty cubic yards is already covered by an exclusive provision in our contract with Waste Pro. So it's that space, that business space for under twenty cubic yard dumpsters that you might call out to have delivered to your driveway, to have whatever carted off. Any company that meets the requirements of city code, fills out the franchise agreement, pays the required fee, can get one of those, assuming they meet the inspection criteria and annual maintenance requirements of the code. We actually have two of those on tonight's agenda coming up later, two applications for those. And because this is a new thing for our council, we had to establish a fee for that franchise. And the fee that we're recommending is in this resolution and it's one thousand dollars. The question that Councilmember Willis is bringing up is, it's called an application fee, can we also call it an application and renewal fee? Because the franchise lasts for a term of five years, when they come back in after five years, assuming they want to, under Councilmember Willis's thought, they would pay another thousand dollars to help offset the administrative costs that go into administering the program with this hauler. Mia, if you could forward just to scroll down just a little bit there. Go back.
It takes away the assumption that we could assume that we could renew.
Right, I think it was.
I think he's, I think, I don't want to put words in his mouth. Go ahead, sir.
Well, we should be collecting for a renewal.
So right there, line item E, application fee, small hauler franchise, one thousand dollars, I think what Councilmember Willis is asking, we call it application slash renewal fee, so insert the words slash and renewal. It's a text amendment to this resolution. Is that it, sir?
Yes. To me, it reads as though it's a one-time fee forever and ever.
Okay, so on page two of three in the resolution, exactly as our city manager said, just to repeat it back so we're on the same page, I'd like to amend the document to add a forward slash and the word renewal after, in between application and fee, right? Under E sixty-two E, I think. Okay, I'm fine with that.
We're good.
Looks like we have, yeah, consensus. Was there any other changes, Councilmember Willis? If so, you can make a motion to amend.
Make a motion to amend resolution number twenty-three dash oh nine with the renewal addition under chapter sixty-two E.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond. City clerk, are you good with the clear on the motion?
Yeah.
Any other discussion, council? Seeing none. City clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Passes four zero. And now we are finished with the consent agenda items, excuse me, and we move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting, where we will be taking up first item number seven, ordinance number oh five twenty-two three. If everyone's ready, city attorney.
Okay, this is first reading of ordinance oh five twenty-two three. And. Rowan. Very above that. An ordinance of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, providing for the granting of a non-exclusive franchise to Fusion Site Florida LLC DBA Freedom Waste Services for small hauler construction and demolition debris collection and roll-off containers under twenty cubic yards in size within the jurisdictional city of Cape Canaveral, jurisdictional limits of the city of Cape Canaveral outlining franchise duties, imposing requirements under which franchise shall operate, providing for conflict severability on an effective date. Again, this is first reading of this ordinance. Yeah, can you answer any questions, Mayor?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for city staff? This is a public hearing item, so I will go to the public here shortly, but just want to make sure we're clear. We will be bringing it back here after public comment. Anything? None? Go to public hearing. This is ordinance number oh five twenty-two three. If anyone here would wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Also, for those of you who are listening at home, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and we'll do the best to recognize you. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting, bring it back to council. If we're good with this, we can go ahead and move it forward.
Make a motion to pass ordinance number oh five dash twenty-two three.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Kellum to adopt ordinance number oh five twenty-two three. No discussion. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Okay, ordinance number oh five twenty-two three passes four oh. Now moving on to item number eight. This is a public hearing item, ordinance number oh six twenty-two three. And once we get to this one, and her city attorney is ready?
Ready. Ordinance number zero-six dash twenty-two three. An ordinance of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, providing for the granting of a non-exclusive franchise to Tropical Karting and Recycling LLC for small hauler construction and demolition debris collection and roll-off containers under twenty cubic yards in size within the jurisdictional limits of the city of Cape Canaveral, outlining franchise duties, imposing requirements under which franchise shall operate, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. This also is first reading and public hearing item. Mr. Mayor.
And counsel, any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, this is a public hearing item. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward. For those of you listening at home, please raise your hand. Yes, sir, come on forward. Those of you listening at home, we are ordinance number oh six twenty-two three. Yes?
Hi, Mr. Mayor of Tropical Carters, thank you very much, Councilman. And I do want to just make one comment. And Councilmember Willis, you are absolutely right that it needs to be a renewal. So thank you very much for bringing that up. And the reason why I think that's important is because part of the application was talking about the type of vehicles and the condition, the condition of the dumpsters themselves. So having a renewal, I think, is very important because we need to demonstrate to you that we're providing the proper equipment, the proper dumpsters, the proper appearance that the town requires, and what they deserve. So had it not been a renewal, I could have put my thousand dollars in in twenty years, brought you dumpsters in your community with holes and that would not look good, and I would not want to do that. But I just wanted to thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. And none online, we'll go ahead and close this. Back to the council, we're on oh six twenty-two three. If we're ready, we can move it forward.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number oh six twenty-two three.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Kellum, second by Councilmember Willis to adopt ordinance oh six twenty-two three. Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Ordinance number oh six twenty-two three passes four oh. Moving on to public hearing item nine, we have an A and a B. City attorney, how do you recommend we move through these individually or together?
Individually.
Okay.
For the vote, but let's, I can read the ordinance and by title.
Please.
And then we can discuss it comprehensively and then take action separately on the ordinance and the resolution.
Thank you.
Ordinance number zero-seven dash twenty-two three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, amending section twenty-six dash three of the city code regarding the election qualifying period requirements for the office of mayor and city council in accordance with section two point zero two, sub-paragraph B of the city charter, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporation into the code, severability and an effective date. This is first reading and public hearing item. This ordinance is coming to you because the voters of Cape Canaveral at the last general election approved a domicile qualification requirement for candidates running for office of mayor and city council. This ordinance updates the city code. It amends twenty-six dash three of the code regarding qualifying period to reiterate that in order to qualify as a candidate, you have to meet the eligibility requirements in the city charter that were recently adopted by the voters. And does a few little house cleaning items to make it clear that qualifying occurs before the city clerk and that qualifying papers have to be submitted in accordance with law and qualifying papers must include the qualifying statement based on the domicile requirements that the voters approved back in November. And so that's what the ordinance does. The resolution, that's before you officially adopts the qualifying statement regarding the domicile requirement within the city. The qualifying statement provides an advisory to candidates as to what that requirement is, cites the legal basis for that requirement that was put before the voters, and then requires the candidate to fill out the affidavit indicating that they are indeed domicile within the city of Cape Canaveral in order to qualify for met the position of mayor or city council. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions, but this is a housekeeping item to get ready for the next election, which is this coming November.
Thank you, counsel. Any questions? I have one affidavit. Is that something we still need to create or?
No, Mia can scroll to it. We have a draft one proposed for you here. Let it lead ahead.
Oh, yes, I see. So this is?
That's attached to the resolution.
Okay.
As.
See that, yeah.
And that is the official qualifying statement that's being proposed. The candidates would have to fill out as one of the requirements for qualifying papers that have to be submitted to the city clerk.
Scroll to page two.
As I indicated at the beginning, was the, is the advisory regarding the requirement, and then that's the, then that's the affidavit that the candidate would fill out and submit with their qualifying papers.
Counsel, any more questions? Okay. This is a public hearing item, so anyone who would like to speak on ordinance number oh seven twenty-two three? Please come forward. Is you listening online? Looks like no one would like to speak. And with that, we'll go ahead and close that and bring it back here to the council. City attorney? We can just move forward through this now, and then we'll go to the resolution next?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think we can go ahead and take the vote, though, for ordinance. So if we're ready, we can move.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number oh seven twenty-two three.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Kellum, second by Councilmember Willis to adopt ordinance number oh seven twenty-two three. Any comments, discussion, debate? None. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Okay, ordinance oh seven twenty-two three passes four oh. Now go over to resolution twenty-two three oh six, which is the second part of item nine, nine B. This is adopting a qualifying statement for qualifying candidates for mayor and the city council pursuant to the requirements of section twenty-six three of the city code and section two oh two B of the city charter, providing for alterations, grammatical and error corrections by the city clerk, repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions, minor severability and an effective date. City manager or attorney, any comments on this one or?
Nothing further, unless there's a question.
Counsel, public hearing item? We're going to bring it, open it up to the public. If anyone would like to speak on resolution twenty-two three oh six, please come forward. Yes, Kristen, please.
I would just say this makes a lot of sense. There's been different elections that have happened throughout the bar where it seems like this comes up as a question of residency. And so I really think it makes a lot of sense to just make sure that people establish it and sign onto it as a part of getting onto the city council and the mayor position. So I just want to offer my support. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. For those of you who would like to speak online, please raise your hand. This is on resolution twenty-two three oh six, public hearing item. Or anyone else here in the, who's joined us here today? Chambers, seeing none. We'll go ahead and close that public hearing on resolution twenty-two three oh six. Counsel, if we're ready to move forward?
Yes. I'd like to move to adopt resolution number twenty-two three dash zero six.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, and a second by Councilmember Willis to adopt Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, and a second by Councilmember Willis to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three oh six. Any further comments? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Motion passes four oh. Now we move on to the items for discussion portion of the This time, the first one is item number ten. For all of you following along, this is to discuss the findings of the wastewater sufficiency analysis requested by council at the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting. So I guess we have, we're a year ago, and relevant in why we're taking this up. City manager, if you'd like to give us a quick overview of what's happening here?
Yes, sir. Every five years, we have a consultant do a wastewater rate analysis for us. Cities have to do this when you have a utility to make sure that it's properly operating, properly funded, and is going to be reliable for our citizens. In our case, we have a sewer plant. That's our wastewater facility. Raff Tellis was a consultant. We've used them before, very happy with them. They came in with a recommendation that we set the rates here, and city council approved that last June. And also, we ask Raff Tellis to give us recommendations on annually what we should do each of the next year for five years. So with that thought, we go every five years, get a study, but with recommendations for each step each year. And Raff Tellis' rate study indicated for the first two years each would be a seven point, he recommended a seven point five percent increase in the wastewater rate that is annually built, that is built. And that's to ensure a healthy surplus in the wastewater utility fund. So what happened during that meeting last year, city council said, tap the brakes on that. We don't have anything against it, but rather than just blindly accept that we're going to need a seven and a half percent increase those years, we'd rather ask staff, ask staff with doing an analysis each year to see, do we really need seven and a half percent? Maybe we need more, maybe we need less. So city council approved that study last June with that proviso. So staff has to go each year and do an analysis and see, where did we land this year? We've had it for a year. Where did we land on that surplus? Did we hit the target? So staff did that, and John is here to talk more about it. And briefly, I'll say that, no, we did not hit the target that we should have hit. We do not have the surplus in the wastewater fund that we thought we would have with the recommended increase. Seven and a half percent wasn't going to get it. It was going to be something along the lines of eleven point four percent. John, is that right? So John and I talked about this, his team talked about this, and we're recommending to council that we do not increase to that eleven point four percent, that we actually stay the course with seven and a half percent as proposed, even though we won't hit our surplus target. Why do we say that? The reason we say that is because there are three factors. We think, we think that we're playing into it this year, which are non-repeating factors. First one, city council approved wage increases for our workers, and our lower paid workers got the biggest raises. That was due to inflationary impacts. That means the wastewater fund has more operating costs. That's not going to recur. Second thing is we took out the last part of our SRF funds, the state revolving fund loans, that's increased the debt service for some of the improvements that council approved at the wastewater treatment facility. That's done. There's not going to be any more. That's nonrecurring, but we do have to consider that debt service. The third and final one was, it costs more in this post-inflationary period. Everything was running up in the last year, including chemicals and things it takes to run a plant. So it just costs more to operate a plant. We don't think that's going to take the same hits year to year. So for those reasons, we feel like majority of the bulk of this increase is nonrecurring, and we recommend we stay the course of seven and a half percent and do not increase the rate to our residents and businesses. Sir, John, did I cover it well enough?
Perfectly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on this?
I might add, Mayor, that we feel like going into next year, although we're going to have to transfer some contingency from wastewater contingency to make up the surplus, we'll know next year whether or not this was the right or wrong decision. I feel confident we'll be right. But consider that we are getting a seven and a half percent increase writing into this year number two now. That's going to help offset that, and we think we're just, we think we're just going to coast over this blip. We'll be fine.
decision to change it in between now and then, we could take it anytime, though, right? What do we want to do? I don't like the increase, but I, if, I do like fee for service over a property tax, and so I don't want to hold here if, you know, there's, you know, the rep. It's hard to approve this for me without looking at the whole budget, but I appreciate, the goal of this was to, you know, discuss the findings of this, the analysis, and how it impacts with the raises and some of those big decisions we made, many cities made last year with the retention issues. And so I know I'm always one trying to push down, but if I did have to pick a lever, it, fee for service is far more interesting to me than the millage side of things. And so I hope that we, we can just keep an eye on this.
Mr. Mayor.
Look at the whole budget will help me.
Mr. Mayor, since this is the enterprise fund and these are user fees, okay, this has nothing to do with the general fund or the millage with taxes. So this is, this unaffected. This is the enterprise fund, okay?
So, no, I understand. I'm saying that, you know, the whole, it's a cash flow from a separate fund that impacts the city, and if it's doing well, we don't have to transfer money from the general fund over to help out with things if it's a self-sustaining, right? I mean, because if we got an issue over on that side.
We have a wastewater contingency.
We'd have to go get a loan.
We keep it within the same fund.
Yeah, the enterprise fund is, is the enterprise fund, and there's no monies from the general fund. You transferred over, transferred over to the, to the enterprise fund. So the general fund stands alone over here, and the enterprise, enterprise funds over here. So, but I think it's smart of council to, if they support staying at seven point five for the residents. Of course, we don't make our surplus of three ninety-one, but we do, the way I calculate is, we come up with about one hundred eighty-one thousand. It's close to two hundred thousand dollar surplus. And if things run rather smoothly, and like the city manager said, a seven and a half percent, we'll increase the user fee significantly. I think we're going to land okay here. So I, I would not, I would not raise the, to eleven point four percent. And just as you said, though, Mayor, I could, I could watch it and see where we're going and make a recommendation if that was the case, but I don't see that that's going to happen.
Yes. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
When, when does this go into effect?
Well, this is, these will be the rates for October first.
October.
Yeah, each, each fiscal year, for the next.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
If we're looking to close this item out properly for the minutes, we could just ask for a motion to approve staff recommendation to stay at seven and a half percent.
Why do you have a question on the surplus? Basically, we're expecting three hundred ninety-one thousand, but due to those decisions, we're looking at a hundred eighty-one thousand dollar surplus. If the, the rate today, I can't recall what we increased it last year, right here.
Ten percent.
And so then this is going to be seven and a half percent on top of the ten?
This is seven and a half percent, October first of the next year, and then the following year goes to, there's a chart in there. I think it's at seven and a half percent for the third year, or is it five percent? I don't have the.
But that's correct, Mayor, yes. There are annual increases.
Yeah, that's the whole point, is costs keep going up, and, and that's, let's see, one more.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, it's seven and a half percent, Mayor, and then twenty-four, twenty-five, the study says it would warrant that we go five percent, then five percent, and then in twenty-six, twenty-seven, two and a half percent.
That should position us well into the, to start the next five-year cycle.
The, the if we don't have a surplus, we're okay, though, right? I mean, we don't have to have a surplus.
Well, what the study shows is basically how the city's financials are going when it comes to the enterprise fund. That's where we're landing. So when they saw this, that the study, they did the study, that keeps us really healthy, a three hundred ninety-one K. But a hundred and eighty K keeps, also keeps us relatively healthy.
I'd like to, no pun intended, study that a little bit more than I've, than I've been able to. And I did think, it's one reading, it's not two, or will we have another one?
No.
This is a discussion item.
Oh, that's right. Why did I, oh, because I got in the agenda. Sorry, I'm reading resolution.
Yeah, because the study's already been passed. So Coco has this resolution we passed ordinance, and, and those rates will automatically kick in.
Because we approved five, yeah.
That's right, that's right.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. Any other comments? I don't think we need to take any action on this one. Thank you very much. But you're looking for consensus on, are we okay with it?
Well, Anthony was just telling me that if we do nothing, we do move forward with the seven and a half percent.
Right.
Oh, yes, because that's already been passed. Yeah. The only thing, this, this action by council was to say, hey, take a look at this, and if it warrants something different, let us know. And we're letting, so we're letting, letting you know, and that's your opportunity to change it if we have to. But in this case, with it coming in higher as opposed to lower, seven point five is a good place to stay. And a hundred eighty-one thousand surplus is sufficient.
And no action required.
Okay. Does anyone want to take any action? Good, okay. All right, and I'll have a chance to get into, I think, some of the things that'll make sense. I do appreciate the work that went into that, that study. It's certainly valuable, and I think that's the future of Cape Canaveral. That stormwater fund has got to be healthy. And good. Well, seeing no other comments there. If we're ready, we can move on to the next discussion item. This coyotes in Cape Canaveral, this is one we had mentioned, I think, at the reports at the last meeting. I think everyone has been hearing an increase of reports for coyotes, and we've all done some study, and city staff sent over some helpful information. And I started just doing a little bit more research, checked out with the Humane Society. They have a template for conflict management plan. I wanted to just share with the council, I emailed this, I mean, it's a link, anyone can access it. Give council a chance to look through it, send an email out if you could facilitate it. And then the city of Atlantic Beach, I don't know if city attorney, you've had experience with coyote management plans. Some very practical, common sense solutions. Education's obviously a big part of it, and conflict management, but the things that jumped out to me were, was I've gotten, I don't know, I don't want to say a number, but easily five unique incidents over the past few months. And I think we're more likely to be, you know, when we talk about sightings, they've been on people's ring doorbells, usually at very early in the morning time when coyotes are out, dusk and dawn. And I did see from Shorewood over there, in the middle of the day, their beach crossovers, they were hanging out. And, you know, when we look at the bird's eye view of Cape Canaveral, it's no mystery on where they probably are. There's few undeveloped lots, but I've learned a lot. I love all animals. I want to be happy, healthy as much as we can. But, you know, I grew up that different parts of the country, they have different ideas on what you do about coyotes. Thinking in urban setting like Cape Canaveral, Florida, and just how I feel, I want to make it crystal clear that I'm for humane intervention. And the more I've learned about it, I don't think relocation or any of those things are a good idea. I think we have to do some of these practical things that they're talking about. Feeding animals outside is just an example of one. I know there's places in Cape Canaveral where you'll see food outside. City, one city said, well, what about our feral cats? And, you know, I want to be able to do that. And they actually worked around that, and they wrote it for feral cats, where you could, I love cats, I got three, I'm not anti-feral cat. But if that food's out, that's a high probability that that, the coyote has an excellent sense of smell, is going to get downwind, and, and even better, there's a few cats hanging around the food, too. You know, putting your garbage cans out, being mindful of what you're putting in the garbage can, sealing it, freezing it. And it's like, well, that's just education, getting it out. That's half, but it, there are some, there's a resolution in here that goes into some of those things about, you know, feeding, and I don't know what our code has. I know we have Officer Palmer and City Attorney here, but it talks about the feeding of animals and being a sanctuary city. Those are a couple, you know, picking the fruit up, leaving fruit that's fallen from the trees are things that can help. But teaching citizens that, I think we can win this by unders, knowing, being smarter than the coyote, knowing what they're good at. And, and the idea of relocating them is going to be tough. It's an emotional situation when you lose your loved one, your pet. It happened to my father-in-law in Cocoa Beach, and I've said that, and I've gotten some incidents, reports where it's continuing to happen. But it's rare to see them approach, you know, if you don't have a pet during daylight hours. But it has a reporting process on how we as a council, because I've got emails, and how we can just basically take down the basic information about the coyote, and then the Humane Society and all, and FWC and those folks, they've got the GIS where they're actually mapping where these are. And it can, I think, dispel some of the tension to show that we're on it. We know that they're there. And so my hope was to bring this up and work with council to read through this plan and see if there are some takeaways that we would like to implement. Hazing, our, you know, officers can do intense hazing and things like that to help with them. But the coyote's adaptable, and so, you know, you got to be careful with a lot of those things. And I think a good starting point would be to just read this between now and the next council meeting, and see if there's anything that staff recommends. My hope is that we can at least get the reporting consolidated, because it's sort of all over the place right now. And we can use that as a tool on our website to say, hey, here's the link to see where they are in Cape Canaveral. And if you see anything, if you have a sighting, certainly if you have an encounter, it tells you exactly what to do. And I'm not aware of any attacks on human beings in Cape Canaveral. It's very unlikely. Yes, I've seen videos of it happening, but the circumstances, I think, were rare. And so I'm not concerned as much about life as I am about somebody out there, you know, just not knowing how to deter them. They're feeding cats, or they're feeding peacocks, and now you've got coyotes running up and down onto people's properties. The videos are all showing they're going on people's properties, they're snooping around the property, and you just want to make sure you're on it. And so a reporting system would be request one. I know that was long, sorry. And this has some recommendations, and I'm happy to pass this around. It's very, very helpful. The resolution is, it has a model resolution in here as well. And it has also a model ordinance as well. And that was about the prohibiting the feeding of wild animals. I'm not necessarily for that, but I do think that we should have, under the circumstances where it's an issue, you know, where you're leaving, I don't know, raw meats and stuff outside or something, we need to have the ability, in my opinion, to address those circumstances. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could add?
Mayor, if I could add.
Yes, please.
The the two documents that the mayor was referring to that staff referred forwarded to him are now available on city social media. They were sent out at five o'clock today. So if you're on our Facebook, you can see you can see those links. One of them is to the F W C. And the other one is to the Humane Society, as the mayor mentioned. And I just wanted to read one particularly right on point thing from the For Efficient Wildlife Conservation Commission. Coyotes are established throughout Florida. Coyotes and other predators self regulate their populations by the amount of available space for territories and food availability. Indiscriminate trapping and removal disrupt this balance. Coyote populations quickly rebound in response to trapping and removal through increased litter sizes or expansion of surrounding coyote territories into areas not previously inhabited. Eradication strategies in other areas of the country have historically been ineffective at controlling coyote populations in the long term. So removing them, they just repopulate and they just come right back. You can't just remove them and call it solved. So what can you do? As the mayor said, protect your pets, bring them inside. Don't leave food out and do common sense things. Other one from the Humane Society is a lot of common sense things in there about yelling, standing tall, waving your arms, yell at the coyote. Things we were taught as a kid, how to do this. Don't run away from them. Yell and wave, and eventually they'll leave. Other things like squirt guns, obviously, the sheriff's department is going to say, make sure they look like a toy. If you're going to use a squirt gun, I think you can get that Ace Hardware, right? And they'll go away, they'll run away. So that's what we're learning so far. And as the mayor said, we're going to stay attuned to this.
Yes, I have to add, they are down near the river also. I saw one last night and I was shocked. And I was surprised. But they, it was Center Street Park where I saw one last night. And I was, I happened to walk about, you know, like at night. And I was kind of surprised to see one down there.
That is a rare, there's not a lot of, I received a video on Holman Road last night, probably of the same coyote. It went across their back and just, there's not a lot of places for them to go. So.
Well, there are feral cats down near the river. So I'm assuming that he cut, he took a shortcut down Center Street, down through the park. So I was, I was quite surprised.
So, yeah, unify and just getting the citizens a way to report is, there's twenty things we could do. And that's one that I think we can begin to talk about. Any other comments? Thank y'all for hearing it out. The citizens did want us to, from mine, to take this up and to try to get on the same page on whether what we can do. And my hope is to get some sort of basic reporting.
The other things I'm thinking about, we talked about the educational videos. And I know a lot of people always have questions about the peacocks and the p fowls. And maybe we do need to address this in one of our educational videos.
Yeah. I think that.
Writing it down.
That has outreach strategies, exactly those things you're talking about. And so if you want to look at this, we can, I'll pass it around. Yes. Yes, I've got the link. City staff's got a few. And I, and there's a couple of extra ones from the Humane Society.
And it's on our social media as of five o'clock today.
Thank you. Does any citizens want to speak? I do have one card on coyotes here from Dr. Shannon Roberts on this issue.
Yes, you covered it. Again, I'm speaking from our experience at Solana Shores. And we've had alligators, coyotes, raccoons, feral cats, as you're talking about. And when we talk to Fish and Wildlife, they did advise, like you're mentioning, to be very careful about feeding, you know, the animals and so forth. They also let us know that there's a den apparently at Jetty Park. And they roam in singularly, singularly, they don't run as a pack. Usually the one coyote didn't see is going back to the den, if that helps to know. And what we did at Solana Shores, and I was just trying to suggest is the sample of what communities could do is we had an information sheet from Fish and Wildlife, and it was very helpful, just one page or with pictures and posted in the community bulletin boards as well as in our newsletter. Because it is a constant, and I think they are becoming more prevalent. And apparently, from what I understand, Ocean Woods having a back on one of their favorite cats and so forth. So we are losing some of the pets, as you're pointing out. But anyway, I just wanted to share what we've been doing, this, what I think is a community communications practice and insights we got from the dens that are in the dunes and also and we're grateful the dunes. So it's sort of like living, learning to live together.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments on that? Anyone from the public who wants to speak? Coyotes, anyone from home who's listening in? If you do, please raise your hand. Seeing none raised. Hello, Mr. LeBlanc. Would you like to speak? Come on down. Thank you.
Yes, Harley Blau from Solana Lake. Yes, we have coyotes coming through there. We see them on our videos coming in and out of gates and so forth. I also want to say that on Shorewood, coming off North Atlantic, going up Shorewood there, the feral cats are being fed. There's five of them left right now. And they are, that person does not leave any food. All the food picked up. Contrary to what happens over at Jetty Park down in pass there, where they feed them along that walkway in there, they put food out and leave it out.
Cats? I'm sorry to interrupt. The people are feeding feral cats out there?
The cats down there, along the walkway. The road goes in on the walkway on the right, right next to the Holiday Inn in Georgia. There, they feed them and they leave that food out there. But yes, there are a lot of them around. And most of the time during the during the evening or early morning, going out to get the paper, I see them. One day I did it, one o'clock in the afternoon, I saw one right out along the heads, right out in front of my building. That's, to me, if you see one during the day, that's more dangerous than the one that I lived with coyotes back in Nebraska. Then we had to shoot them, though, so they didn't kill our chickens. So that's all I got.
And and I mean, that 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 was what I was saying is the difference is that's what a lot of folks do. And but we, you know, being, we're in a tight urban city, and we don't want that. We want to know that they're not as big of a threat as I think as some people think to human life, but they're certainly a threat to your, your small pets. And that's it. I think we're good. Good to go. Next discussion item is a very important one, the one that I've been looking forward to. And it's nothing new to Cape Canaveral. We've we're sort of all a bunch of volunteers up here. But I had been approached several times by citizens, some consistent about interest to be involved. And like I said, we have a lot of the volunteers working. And so my hope here was to start this conversation. Can't do it all at once. We're already doing some things today. But there are the first one, the community cleanups and consistent maintenance. I'm not talking about like volunteers to do a trash bash, volunteers to do a sea oat planting. Todd and I have had a chance to chat. It's more about the people live here, that we all kind of have our routines and walk our streets in a certain way and wherever we like to explore. But through that, people want to help clean up and pick up. And, you know, the idea was, what if, you know, we tried to work on, you got special projects where we might need everyone to run over and help paint Capeview Elementary School. But another, but those are the one and done type projects. Those are fun, but just the ongoing kind of designated areas general, not trying to, you know, create too much of a overthink it, but to say, hey, these few streets, if you can help keep us covered here from a cleanup perspective, that's great. Storm prep and recovery is another responsibility on those streets. Can you make sure that the drains are clear? If you see something, say something. City staff is running around now, working. And so I shared some ideas. Todd, I, city manager, I think, put together some things that we were doing. And that was it. Just want to talk with staff and this council that we've got volunteers right now who want to get involved and see what ideas we had. The one I I'll leave with is, you know, having an area that you sponsor a street, you sponsor a boardwalk, beach crossover. And you just try to help keep that area and you take pride in that sense, that place. And so one of many good ideas, but that's it. Thank you.
Mayor, if I, if I could, I did create a document with staff's help, and I'd be happy to distribute it to the council. If that's okay, on this point. Mia? I asked staff to talk about all the volunteer opportunities that they have, also lessons learned in volunteers. And I just want to read some of the high points of this three page document. We started off by putting in the pros, the cons, and the neutrals of a volunteer program. There's a lot of things to consider, and we do have volunteers very successfully. There's great pros, there's some significant cons, and then there's just a bunch of neutrals, just like, yeah, yeah, all this applies. So just to hit on a few of them, obviously, the pros are reduced cost, production of additional work product, reduced task times. The volunteers gain college credits, translate their skills and knowledge, gain to other careers. We've also had the fortune of hiring volunteers here in the city. But the cons, there are repetitive training costs, same amount of work goes into training volunteers as regular employees. Volunteers tend to be temporary. Permanent employees tend to remain in the positions longer, longer. Therefore, more money is spent on training volunteers. That's okay. That just comes with it. Some volunteers have taken, felt taken advantage of the arrangement. They've asked for more money. Others have asked for exceptions to city codes or park policies for personal benefit. For example, we receive requests from individuals who want to make copies or coffee in exchange for free membership at the at the gym. So just those kind of negatives, sometimes volunteers quit with little notice. Those are the cons. The neutrals, neither pro or con. It takes a great amount of planning and patience. You have to create job descriptions, a training program and a review process. Background screenings, of course, seventy five dollars required every three years. These are required for those who have direct contact with patrons. Some people see that as an invasion of privacy. Some people wouldn't be able to pass a background screening. There's no general liability or workers' comp insurance premium savings with volunteers. Liability exposure is the same as with employees. It's liability risk is higher if there's lack of training. So we make sure they're trained. There are good reasons for placing limitations on volunteer opportunities. They should be limited to non critical job duties, because we don't want to create a volunteer position in whom we must depend to the extent that if the volunteer were unable to attend or perform, we would have to take staff time away from another employee's regular duties to perform network. A volunteer might abandon their stewardship and staff may not find out until a complaint is received, causing a disruption to services. Dependency on volunteers should be avoided. Don't depend on them, because the number of available volunteers might vary from year to year. They should not be used in situations where there's an exposure to sensitive information, i.e. driver's license, social security numbers, medical information, background check reports. We shouldn't be asking volunteers to drive. We shouldn't ask them to form work near moving vehicular traffic or climb or lift heavy items or exposure to money handling. So those are just things that we're all aware of. But to ask the the specific questions, Mayor, that you hit on, I talked about in this table. We, I like the idea of parks, and maybe we might even talk about a park steward program. Membership is limited to sitting city council members. Duties can include having access to the combinations to unlock park gates, et cetera. Parking beach cleanup events are, yep, they're possible, a good idea. The Community Economic Development Department currently has volunteer opportunities for annual sea oats, community trash pickups, planting events, internships, giveaways and outreach events. The question came about Friday Fest, Christmas Memorial Day, et cetera. Yes, Friday Fest and Christmas events, we do have volunteer opportunities through the PAL. Contact PAL if you want to volunteer there. Currently, they're full. They don't have need volunteers, but that changes. Arbor Day doesn't need volunteers. We would like to have more people come out to it, actually. City's not involved in launches. Memorial Day and Veterans Day are coordinated and staffed by volunteers from the local veterans organizations. We've got one coming up here, by the way, BFW. On Saturday, Mickey, you want to plug for that? It's at the yeah. Yeah. And those, in the city staff doesn't get involved because the city's offices are closed on those days. As far as storm trip, storm prep and recovery, we definitely encourage residents to focus on storm preparation for their own properties. Staff is annually trained for citywide and facility storm prep. As far as storm recovery goes, there's a potential for injury and liability concerns that outweigh the benefit of assistance because staff is annually trained for citywide facility storm recovery cleanup and dangers. Damage assessment staff is also required to be certified in building codes. Other volunteer opportunities in street and beach patrols and V C S O, yes, V C S O has an extensive program in place. We've linked to their website, www.bardsheriff.com. There's a whole host of things there you can volunteer for. As far as admin support, data acquisition and entry, yes, we do that. The Community Economic Development Department has used filing scanning in the past. So it's me, City Clerk's Office. Currently, there's no openings there, but sometimes there are. And also in community development, finance doesn't have any openings right now. But then we put a whole list of things in here that we thought of, what other volunteer opportunities are out there that we want to take this moment to tell people. The youth athletics program, Parks and Recreation is seeking volunteers to help coach and referee youth sports activities. We haven't been successful in getting any volunteers to commit because the volunteer position will have direct contact with sensitive populations, requires a level two background screening, you're dealing with kids. The city will pay for that screening. Future Leaders Program, these are for a certain number of preteen or teens and preteens that have aged out of summer camp that want to give back to summer camp to the kids that are still in it. We want volunteers for that. Also internship opportunities there and Parks and Recreation, Space Coast Paddle Battle Tournament can use volunteers. PAL, we talked about PAL can use more volunteers, the Little Free Library, pantry stewards, we need volunteers there. Parks and Recreation will be restarting the volunteer engagement opportunities at the community garden soon. Molly's heading that up. So we're going to be putting out a request for volunteers at the community garden. And lastly, we just wanted to note that the library in Capeview, we get a lot of calls for volunteers at the Volunteer Library in Capeview. And we'd like to, these agencies to consider developing their outreach efforts in the community. So there's a lot of places that people can get involved. There's a website the city has where you can look up what if, what opportunities are there, you can fill out an application, and we'll put you to work. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel? Any questions, comments? Yes, that is very helpful, and the pros and cons are valuable. So thank you. Nineties had the volunteer Cape Canaveral Volunteer Corps coming through here. I was digging through the old historical records, looking to sixty years. And they were doing a lot of stuff, you know, planting the trees, the sea oats were doing. Painting Capeview was literally a project they did. Y'all might have been you're around to see some of those. And so I thought that was a good community spirit. And they're just they're all kind of sitting there. And I think it, the real work is finding things that are low risk, sensitive, stay away from that. Find a great, a few projects outside the box is my hope. I think the most physical labor I thought about was just keeping, you know, when you walk down the street, I walked down a lot is Ridgewood, and some of the planters in there, the summertime rain, turn your back weeds pop up. But keeping people on the sidewalks, keeping the planners cleaned, and the list goes on and on. So if we could identify some projects and or promote the existing opportunities a little better, that would be good. But the one that I thought was so cool was they did a volunteer appreciation dinner at the Radisson.
We used to do that for board members.
For the board members. And I'd love to bring that back.
In the budget if you like.
Is right, is because they're volunteers, too. And sit and then say, hey, once a year, we all get together.
Is there consensus for that? Because I'll just ask John to add it in the proposed budget.
We did it one year, I think it was on Founder's Day. And I remember we had music, we did it over at Manatee Park, and we all were, the mayor gave us each, you know, certificate of appreciation for every advisory. Yes, that was the last time we did it. And the, right, and we all got the certificates. And I have them all framed.
Would you support?
Being on the advisory, because yes, that's real. I think that's important to recognize.
Board appreciation dinner, though, as the mayor suggested?
Dinner, or maybe just a luncheon. And I just, I think that, you know, maybe a luncheon would be.
I think anytime we can show appreciation for people who do volunteer, we need to make the effort.
John, let's let's add that in the proposed budget. I like that. Bring that back.
And when we just, whenever the best date and the time is, you know, we'll go into what we have today, but that's a great opportunity to launch. Give us enough time to say, hey, thank you for being here. We're going to try to get more volunteers. Here's the three, five. Here's the three, five, twenty opportunities of where you can get involved and, you know, we're all working together. But yeah, I think it brings everyone together at least once a year and, and thank you. That's all I had.
I, I remember how it was done. I'll, I'll get.
I even like a picnic. I even like a picnic. I thought that a picnic is even a nice thing to do. And the reason I'm thinking not while now, but what I'm thinking, people who do have young children, children to play in the playground. Again, it's a small town, more family event. It's not as formal as a dinner. I mean, it could be a dinner, but I mean, I'm just saying that when we have it in the park, it's more available, you know? And if you do have small children and you serve, because we do have young couples that serve on advisory committees, the children can play in the park. I ju- I just like it. I like it. Our small town feeling.
Well, there was one other thing on the, and I did get a citizen comment on citizen patrols. I don't know if we had a chance to talk about that. Um, Commander? You spoke here. A, a, a status update on that and, and whether or not you think, if we do start to think about this, if somebody says, you know, would this be a good opportunity for someone to serve? Has it been a good program?
It did have. It's been a real, real big program, good program. Um, like with a lot of things, COVID hit, it, it kind of, um, you know, we, we quit allowing volunteers to come in for a period of time. Um, because of that, we kind of lost some. There was a lack of interest. So it's, it's kind of been here in the last year. So kind of trying to build that back up. Um, but we, we've had some, some really good, very active volunteers here in our COP program in Canaveral precinct. And they help out with a lot of different activities that go on throughout the year. Um, you know, of course the reindeer run is a big thing and the, uh, National Night Out, they come out and they do, they help assist. They're kind of an extra set of eyes for us. Um, I know, I think there was a question had come up, um, with parking, stuff like that. We had, years ago, they were involved in some parking enforcement, but we try not to put them in a confrontational, that's something that can turn into confrontational. So, so that was, that was eliminated several years ago, um, just because of a couple issues, not necessarily here, but countywide. But it is an extra set of eyes that can go out and, and let us know if something's going on or problem areas and, you know, show up for some of the events that the cities do. So, so yeah, so we, I know we just had an interview yesterday, as a matter of fact, with, with somebody that expressed, expressed an interest in that. And, um, and the, the COP program would be something geared a little bit more local. You know, there's a lot of different opportunities with the sheriff's office, with our animal services unit, stuff like that and, and other areas of the county. But that would be kind of more of the local, local field here for the community that somebody wanted to get involved. And it's just a matter of going on, online, uh, filling out an application. There's a drug screen involved, a little interview, the background, you know, and then, um, and like everything else, we, you know, in, in the past, we have had some that haven't been so active. And, and there is a, is a requirement, you know, to, to do so many hours per month. Obviously we were, you know, flexible if somebody can't make them and can do it, make up the following month. But because we do hold liability insurance, you know, on them and it is a, a small cost. So, uh, we just ask for, you know, if somebody's going to come out, that, um, that they do try and stay active with us.
That's actually, I think those are some lessons we can learn from too. So, you know, to go to an appreciation, some sort of minimum hours, because that's what happens. You know, we get excited, we launch and, you know, well, COVID just certainly was, that makes sense. So happy to hear it's building back. And we have, is it three or how many vehicles COP, uh, that they're able to?
Well, we, we can adjust that depending upon our.
Okay, so we're not.
Time. I think right now we just have the one or two, just because, you know, because of the numbers. But at one point, I think we had three or four vehicles and each precinct has, has a contingency of COP. So sometimes you may only have, you know, two or three at one precinct. They don't, may only need car, one car, but if another precinct knows, we can kind of shuffle those around to kind of accommodate where we need them. And then, and it's a countywide thing too. When we have an event go on here, um, that we need additional resources, we'll put out that word to all of our COPs. So you can have COPs that are signed in South Precinct or East Precinct, that'll come over and help out with the reindeer run. And just like the COPs here could, could go assist with the Mayor Island Parade or something like that. It's not, not necessarily specific. You do have a precinct you're based out of, but doesn't mean that you're specifically at that precinct. It's, it may be someplace else.
Very helpful. Thank you. Any other questions for the commander? That's all I had. Sounds like we have some, just wanted, no action needed. Just wanted to get this going and if it'd be okay, I'll continue to talk with our city manager and y'all can do the same. And if we feel like we got some, maybe we can get something going in the next couple of months. And so with that, that brings us to the, the end of our, our meeting. That's item number twelve. We can now go into the reports portion of the meeting. I did have a note. I did not forget. Councilmember Kellum, if you still choose, uh, you'd wanted to say something, but any reports here today? Commander, while you're up there, any reports on the community that you feel like we should know about? Obviously.
Yeah, true. Get further on the beach coming up this weekend. So just expect increased traffic, um, you know, in the area, um, activity, a lot of probably extra activity on the beach. Coming up to view the boat races and that. They're, they're down in the Coppel Beach area, but obviously, you know, there'll be transit through, leaving the port going down. There's the, the boat parade that they, they do because they do a big party, street party down at Coppel Beach Friday night. So they all kind of convoy together, leave Friday afternoon from the port, usually around three thirty time periods. It does kind of bog that traffic a little bit on A1A for, you know, twenty, thirty minutes. Um, but yeah, other than that, I can't think of anything offhand. It's, uh,
A lot of noise.
A lot of noise.
Yep. And so around three thirty on Friday, we could expect to see a little pressure on A1A.
And I believe, um, Coppel Beach closing down A1A, um, when you see the background there. Yeah. Okay. I know in the past they've done that. They get a permit from DOT, they actually close down A1A, um, and, and down there a minute. So they will reroute traffic. So if you were transiting through there, you're going to be rerouted off A1A, side street bypasses and come back. So it, that's another, uh, bottleneck point down there probably throughout the night. So if you don't, uh, unless you're going down there for the party, they want to play that.
Phew. Yes. So we'll probably feel it on Ridgewood, uh, too. Well, thank you very much, Commander. Fires, I don't think you're the time. City manager, any reports for us?
Uh, just two, uh, for me. Um, there was a comment made at the last council meeting, uh, by Andrew Shaking about people running the stop signs on Buchanan Avenue. And I did order the placement of flashing red lights on the stop sign at the westbound stop sign of Point Setta and Buchanan. That'll be coming soon. We want to see how that does. But the big hope for stopping the, the stop sign runners is when we do the Presidential Streets Master Plan improvements, putting in speed controlling devices like tables, speed tables and whatnot at the intersections, we'll, we'll definitely require people to slow down. But I agree with her comments last month that that, that road is something of a collector and people do speed right through that point set of one and other ones to get to that light. So we're going to start with this one. Also, I wanted to mention that in the, um, informational items, we do have the registration packet, the draft registration packet for the golf carts. This is the one that, um, will go live, um, very soon here. We're targeting a start date of June first for registrations for golf carts. That packet you'll find online, you'll find in city hall. Um, it talks about the ordinance, the history of what we've done here, gives the process about, starts with, hey, pick up your registration packet and then schedule your, your appointment and the code enforcement will schedule an appointment with you. You can reschedule if there's a problem. Meet with us at city hall. We'll do an inspection. We have the inspection checklist in here. There's a registration. So we'll know who the owner is, where he or she lives, whether contact information is, are you the applicant? Are you the owner? Are you the same person or different? Then we've got, you have to read this statement and swear to abide by all the city's regulations and sign that. Upon a successful, uh, inspection and payment of the fee, then you'll be issued a, a sticker. And the sticker will say twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one or zero zero two and so on. And then underneath that will be a second sticker that'll have the month and the year of your expiration. So if you get one in June of twenty twenty-three, it'll say expires June twenty twenty-four. That's when you have to come in again. This, the checklist is provided so you know exactly what they're going to be looking for. We included the map, the golf cart road network map of the places where you are allowed to ride your golf carts. Signs are up already, June, I think they're done. Is that correct? They just have the bags over them, right? There are a few more to go. They'll be ready by June first. It says, this is where golf carts can be and this is what, nope, don't go further than this. Those are the types of signs that we've got. We also include the entire city code of ordinances in there. So you can read every single rule and regulation. And then lastly, Mayor, we have a golf cart frequently asked questions. These are the ones that we think people are going to want to know. And we're going to put this out there on the website and city hall as well. So we can't say we've got it a hundred percent, but I think we're closing in on ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent ready to go for June first.
Could someone eventually, if not today, just go on their phone and register their golf cart from their phone or from their computer?
I have to talk to staff about that. Currently it's a paper and pencil form. But maybe the possibility might exist. That data will get put into a spreadsheet. So I'm, I'm sure smarter people would be able to figure out a way to do that by then.
Yeah, one day. I mean, if it's not today, that would be great that somebody gives, when I go buy a fishing license, I do it from my phone. And it's great, you know, it's, you just punch it in. I know that costs money, but, um, that way it's easy as possible for people. And it takes away, because this has to be scanned and then taken in and they can submit it. And so if we can get there one day, that would be good.
Yeah, it still has to be inspected.
So yeah, make it request and expect.
Officer Palmer would like to say a few words, Mayor, if that's okay. Officer Palmer would like to speak, please.
Officer Palmer?
Yes, I was just informed that it will be on the website, um, soon to be able to, um, populate that form. Um, we also take it, they can email it to us. Um, we, they can bring it into us. They could do, you know, there's numerous things that they could do to fill out the form. And then once we get that form, we'll set them up with an appointment.
Thank you. That's all I had. Yes, please.
I, I would like to know the total cost involved with this project, uh, from the studies that have been done and also the signs that have been put up and the time spent. So I would like to hear a total cost on that. Thank you.
Mayor, I have to ask for consensus on council. If we, that's, sounds like a significant effort of staff time. Does the council wish to do that?
Uh, do you, you're wanting to know the total cost?
I would just like to know how much we spent on this. That's all.
On the engineering studies from?
Just about golf carts. I just want to know.
Over the past few years.
Yes, I'm just curious.
That can get a little bit tricky because you're, you're, if you're talking about total cost, then we have to include the legal fees. I have to look through all Anthony's invoices and things like that.
Oh, all right. We'll talk about it. We'll talk about it. We'll talk about it another time. Thanks.
I would just like to thank the staff and everybody that stood by me through this from the beginning. It's been four years trying to get this done for the citizens. I think it's going to be a real asset and another thing that brings us into a small town feel. Thank you very much for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Uh, yes, last week we had the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organizations Governing Board Meeting. And we were able to keep two projects for Cape Canaveral A1A at the top of the list. So, uh, we, we do have to contend with larger cities, but, uh, I think we have finally between the citizen activists and our technical advisory have been able to impress upon everybody how important this is for a small town. And it's, it's working. So I'm, I'm encouraged.
Thank you. Everybody on the council, good to go. City attorney, city clerk, city nun. We had our first ever TEDx Cape Canaveral as a private group. They came and they did it. And, um, that was a really cool event and I think the city was able to help. They, or they chose to do some of their trainings and stuff, but that's a, that was, that was cool to see and the, and a lot of talent came out and hopefully we can do more in small spaces. Maybe we can do it at the C5, uh, if it makes sense. But, uh, wanted to share that. Check that website out if, if they decide to do another one or not. But that was all I had. Thank you again. And, um, thoughts and prayers are with all, all the council, family, friends, this community, citizens. There's some tough stuff. It's hit, uh, everybody in, in different ways. And so just know that together we will get through this. So thank you very much. Great meeting. Happy birthday, Cape Canaveral.
I do have a couple of things to report.
Oh, I thought you had already.
No, that was a report. That was a question.
I thought you said you were good. Please.
No, I went to Space Coast League of Cities and, um, we did talk about the legislative priorities and what did pass, what didn't pass, what will probably be put on the agenda for next year. And, um, this, this week I am going to Mayor, uh, Carol McCormick from Palm Shore. She spent twenty-one years, I think, as mayor. So I'll be attending the retirement party on Friday night. And I, now I'm wondering how I'm going to get there because it's, usually I take, uh, A1A down to Panida and go across to River Rock. So anyway, that's, that's about it. That's, oh, also, uh, if you don't know, we had the big birthday party. That was a big success. Over at Capeview School, we had the popsicle party for the children and, uh, also one of the young ladies, Grace, she designed a T-shirt that, uh, is being displayed by, um, John Delio and.
Johnny, would you care to model for our audience?
Yes. And socks?
So that was a big success. The kids really had a great time and we did too. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments? Meeting adjourned.